I'd like to start the meeting with everybody, please rise for a salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Please be seated. Evening, everyone. Welcome to the zoning board of adjustment, regular meeting, January 18, 2024. Adequate notice that this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. By prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, the agenda of this meeting, mailing such same announcement to the home news and Tribune, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk and posting the agenda on the municipal website. Vice Secretary Porcelli, could we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Chaney?
Present.
Mr. Holahan?
Here.
Ms. Andrews?
Here.
Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Here.
Ms. Testaverde?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
I am also here. At this juncture, we're going to swear in, we were going to swear in three members tonight, but we're only going to do one, and that belongs to Mr. Izzo, who moves from alternate one to a full voting member. So if you would step up, Mr. Chaney, the attorney will swear you in. I'll give him a word.
All right, you want to lift your right hand? Aye. So you said your full name?
Aye, Louis Izzo.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
Allegiance to the same.
Into the governments?
Into the governments.
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
Partially and justly?
And partially and justly.
Perform all duties of my position?
Perform all duties of my position.
Of zoning board of adjustment member?
Of zoning board adjustment member.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Salve me God, if you...
Salve me God.
May I have you sign a, sign right? Yep.
Is he here?
Don't worry, mine's coming just as bad. Sir.
All right, thank you for that interruption, all those in the audience here. We were supposed to have two others, they may be delayed. I think if they come, we can do it, because they can't sit unless we do swear them in.
Yeah.
If they show, we'll interrupt the meeting, but it's only going to take a minute or so.
But we don't need alternates, am I correct?
We don't need any, no, we're good. Sir? Are you Devinder Singh?
Yes.
Do come on up.
Mr. Singh, the same applies, the board attorney will swear you in.
Of course, of course. All right, can you step up a little closer? Yeah, all right, raise your right hand. Aye, state your full name?
Aye, Devinder Singh.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and/or affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
Into the governments established?
Into the government established.
In the United States?
In the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
And partially and justly?
Partially and justly.
Perform all the duties of my position?
Perform all the duties of my position.
Of zoning board of adjustment alternate to member?
Of zoning board of adjustment alternate member.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations. Mr. Singh actually got me signed. So must have been signed right there. And then... There's three total. Thank you, sir. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Well, I'll really be fooled if Mr. Victoria now pops in, so. Congratulations to the two. For those, we're all homeowners here, the people on this board, so I can explain quickly to you, this zoning board of adjustment is comprised of nine members. There's seven full members, and there's two alternates. The two alternates are there in the event that they would need, be needed, should one of the full-time members be absent for some reason or another. Voting for local, what we would call local or a C variance, bulk variance, variances that you're here for, require a plurality, so it's a, it's three of, it's four of seven. In the case of a use variance, where it'd be more commercially oriented, that requires a supermajority, so there has to be five of seven. Only seven members vote at one time. Again, the two alternates would only be voting if they were, if one of the full-time members was absent. So we're homeowners, just like you are, we're unpaid volunteers of the community. This board is set in action by state law, and that's what the state law requires. It requires a panel of local residents in that, in that community, not from any other community, they have to live in the same community. The gentleman to my right, sitting tonight, is Jeff Chaney. He's the attorney, he keeps the board out of trouble. So he's here to advise us. Down to my right is Mr. Holloman, he's the zoning officer. If you ever watched any of the meetings on TV when they're a little bit more complicated, you'll see a lot of lawyers, engineers, planners, architects. But tonight is dealing with homeowner issues, so I'll tell you in advance, before I call anybody up, it is, this is a judicial body in the sense that you need to put certain proofs on the record when we're going to ask you questions about what you did at your home or what you want to do at your home. Mr. Chaney will assist me and/or the, he doesn't have to assist the homeowner, but we want you, we want to elicit the right comments from you about your properties. This is for your benefit, so he cannot, the board cannot act unless we have, hear the right things from you. So it's a relaxed atmosphere in the sense that we're all here in this together. We're not here to punish you, to mock you, we're here to help you. So we're citizens of the community. When we call you up, I'm going to ask you a couple of things. First, the board attorney will swear you in, who's ever going to testify in behalf of your application. Any, if there's more than one, he'll swear both parties in, or more. We'll ask you a couple of questions. What did you do, or what do you want to do? How did you do? Why did you do it? And why are you here tonight? Mr. Holloman answers that question, why you're here tonight, because he knows what the applications are as far as the ordinances that may or may not be in, in question. So we try to make it simple and easy for you, please try and be relaxed. I know it's, it's probably a hard thing to sit there, but nonetheless, we're here to help and not really to hurt you. So I hope that calms you down a little bit. We have one resolution on the agenda tonight, we'll handle that administratively. I would also ask, if you have a phone on you, and I'm sure everybody does, please silence it so that it's, we don't interrupt the meeting. We're being televised on OBTV channel 15 right now, and also on YouTube Live. You want to see the meeting, it's also back up on the, on YouTube website, I guess after about a day or so. All right, having said that, I'll move on to the resolution, 60-2022Z, Abilio and Elizabeth Tachera, D variance. Mr. Chaney?
So just a little preface, this is for a D variance, so this is going to be a bit more longer than any of the variances that you are here tonight for. So resolution of the zoning board of adjustment of the township of Old Bridge, County of Millsack, State of New Jersey, granting D1 use variance relief to Abilio and Elizabeth Tachera for property known as block 24204, lot 26, also known as 2075 English Town Road, Old Bridge, New Jersey. The board received an application for a bifurcate application for use variance relief pursuant to NJSA 40:55D, sorry, 55D-70D1. Seeking the use variance first, and they will return for site plan, site plan approval at a later date. The applicants were represented by Peter Clausar, Squire. The matter is subject to two public hearings on December 7th and January 4th, 2024. And in support of the application, the following individuals testified, Elizabeth Tachera, the applicant, Brett Pappy Jr., professional engineer, Joseph Highland, architect, Michael Passalano, professional planner. The property is approximately 14.82 acres within a low-density slash severe environmental constraints residential zone, which is the R-120. It's currently a one-story masonry building. They purchased the building seeking to house their business, which is Prestige Construction Materials. It's... Second, please. They are proposing to demolish the existing 885-square-foot structure on the property and replace it with a 6,550-square-foot building to store construction equipment and supplies. They submitted five exhibits, namely color concept plan, architectural plan, elevation plan, rendering of the proposed building, and planning exhibit. They confirmed, they confirmed they've received all approvals from the NJDEP. The property would be utilized to pick up equipment, and no work or retail would be occurring on the site. And as a condition of approval, the hours of operation would begin no earlier than 7:00 a.m. and would complete at 6:00 p.m. on weekdays, and 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Saturdays. As an additional condition of approval, there'd be no leasing on, no leasing space on site, and no trailer parking. There was no bulk variances, and the applicant's professional planner testified it was well-sued for the particular use. Special reasons existed for granting the variance, namely encouraging municipal action to guide the appropriate use development, to provide adequate open space, to provide sufficient space to promote a visual, desirable visual environment, and to encourage coordination of various public and private procedures and activities for land development. Further, that the existing building is dilapidated, and the new building would be more visually appropriate. The property has historically been used as commercial, commercially, and is non-residential in nature, and therefore is well-suited. There was no testimony when it was open to the public, and so that's an overview of what we have here, and testimony that was provided.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Board members, you've heard the resolution, and you've heard it explained by the board attorney. Does someone move for adoption?
Testaverde.
Is there a second? Izzo? Second is Andrews. Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. We move forward, board, to minutes, I'll call each one individually. It's the minutes of December 7th, 2023 meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review them. Have some any comments or suggestions for deletion or addition, or they have someone to move them for adoption?
Andrews?
Is there a second?
Second, Scogno.
Moved in second, roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, yes, the same applies, minutes of January 4th, 2024 meeting. Someone move it, please?
I'll move it, Chevalier.
Is there a second?
Andrews.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Thank you, board members. We move on to our applications this evening. If you're holding an agenda, the last one obviously not, is not on, we'll have four of the five. Last one has been asked to adjourn. If anyone here is here on the matter of Sarah Douglas, location at 59 Alpha Road, for sun deck, and for sun room and deck, that matter is not going to be heard tonight. It's going to be back on the schedule for February 15th. So if you're here on that matter, it will not be heard this evening. We'll move forward to the first one, it's 58-2023Z, Ralph Edwards, this is Zone R6, block 4,000.16, lot 40. Physical location's 15 Jupiter Court, is requiring a C variance to legitimize a paver patio and fire, a fire pit. Mr. Edwards, please come forward. Good, are you going to be testifying alone? The lady's going to... I've found that that if you have your wife here, you better have her sworn in, because she's going to talk either way, so. You both can be seated? Oh, no? You don't have to promise anything. You have to, the board attorney will take it from here.
You just have to swear. So if, yeah, starting with you, Mr. Edwards, can you raise your right hand? Can you state your name? Do you solemnly swear to, as to the truth of the testimony for which you're about to provide? Thank you. Ms. Edwards, can you raise your right hand? Can you state your full name? Do you solemnly swear as to the truth of the testimony for which you're about to provide?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both for being here tonight. We understand that you seek to legitimize a paver patio and fire pit. Obviously, that means it's already there, so for some reason, this was either caught or someone has brought it to our attention. So as I told you before, we're just going to need you to do the who, what, why, where's, tell the board that we may have some questions of you, you may have some questions from us. We're going to ask Mr. Hollahan what the variance, why is there a need for the relief? The board might have some more matters amongst themselves they may want to talk about. We'll go to a public portion, finally, then we're going to come back, I'm going to ask if you want us to take a vote. If there's a jeopardy of something that's not going right, you'll always have the opportunity to say, can I ask for a continuance? Okay, and that would apply to all of the matters tonight, basically the same thing. All right, so please, take your time. If you want to start, if your wife wants to start, it doesn't matter, tell the board what it's all about.
Well, you want to start?
No, you don't.
Okay.
See, I knew this, I told you. Well, let her start.
No, 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 you don't.
Well, we, we hired a contractor thinking that he would take care of us. He went out of business, it's JD Landscaping.
The mic a little bit closer to you, sir?
Yes. So he started the work, we thought permits were in, he was taking care of everything. We lost contact with him trying to get everything, everything coordinated with, you know, the injunction with court here. We weren't able to get anything. We exceeded over a paver's requirement. We were told by the town, by Mr. Stanford, that he looked over our, our pavers, that we over, we overshot our allotment, so we had to do a survey and come up with that, and here we are. Any questions for you, I can try to answer to the best of ability.
Sure. When did you do this? What year? Did you do it during COVID period?
Yes, yes.
We've heard, we've had a lot of them that have come in like that.
We had, we had issues with...
We signed the contract in 2019, but they didn't start till COVID. I don't know, like...
And it took, it took almost eight months to get it all done. The pool had a permit and everything, there was tremendous amount of sand, we were trying to get rid of it, we couldn't get rid of it. Then he was like, let's build a retaining wall. We had a pre-existing retaining wall in the back, behind the pool, but then he rebuilt another retaining wall and extended patio close to the fence. Thought it wasn't, I thought it wasn't a problem, but, um, what was the officer's name? Dominic?
Phil.
No, Dominic came...
Well, you don't have to name the contractor, that's not that important. This is common, that, that happened particularly when people were trying to improve their properties for usage during COVID, not knowing what the outcome was going to be, people were staying within their own homes and trying to recreate on their property. Basically, was that what you were looking to do, the same thing?
Yeah, we, I'm not really familiar with this, we're basically from New York City, rented most of our lives, 36 years old when I bought the house. Got four children at home, still at home, still raising family, but, um, you know, we did it for the family, you know? It's a big family, backyard, you know, it's, I was very excited when it was completed, but, um, it's, it's really upsetting that I might have to part with or something, I don't know, I don't know what the outcome might be.
See what the board thinks about it.
Okay.
Did you want to add anything, Mrs. Andrews, at this particular time?
Well, basically, we had the permit for the pavers and for the pool, but I guess the contractor didn't update, I, I don't, I don't know. I, I didn't, we didn't realize that you weren't allowed to put all those pavers, you know? I mean, had we known, we would have just did what we were supposed to do, but, anyway.
Okay.
That's where we're at.
All right. Let me ask Mr. Hollahan what's, what's going on over there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, me and Damian had visited Mr. and Mrs. Edwards probably about a year and a half ago at this point, because it was, it was born of a complaint, so. Yeah, I mean, there's just a couple of variances, they're requesting one for the minimum landscape area ratio, and then one for the setback where they are proposed, or it's existing at .7 feet, where three feet minimum is required. The landscape area ratio, they are at 33%, where 55% is required. So, yeah, I mean, at this point, a little bit straightforward, the improvements have already been done, already completed, so now the applicant is here just seeking to legitimize those improvements and variances.
Can I ask you a question? What's behind your home? You have a fence?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's two fences separating, oh, the man behind, it's 22 Mercury?
Okay.
Yeah.
It's his fence and then my fence.
Yeah, it's all fenced, then.
Did it appear to be well-done, except the fact that they violated the setbacks?
Yes, yes. The only question I have, specifically Mr. Edwards, the garage, is that made part of this application?
No.
Variants, okay, because I know I had, when I had reviewed the application and I noted it, Chairman, in my denial letter, that there appeared to be a garage on the right side of the property that was installed sometime in 2015. I'm not sure if you guys have purchased it, that was pre-purchase or post-purchase, but that garage did not have a permit, and also requires additional variance relief, because it's one foot from the property line where 10 feet is required, so.
That was, there was an existing shed there? And you just expanded it?
We just expanded it.
Yeah. So it was the same distance that it was from the...
It's just the pad, the pad is a little extended?
Okay.
And we build up?
Okay. Now, did you guys extend that stone area or the garage itself?
We did, you mean the pavement?
Yeah.
The foundation was extended, yes.
Okay, okay. So Chairman, I don't know if it's...
I would ask Mr. Chaney, and then obviously ask the applicant, if they're here now, it would be the time to probably seek that relief, correct?
Yeah, I mean, that...
They don't have to, but...
Yeah, I mean, this is one of those situations that we alluded to, that you alluded to and said, if there's something that comes up that might make it where, you know, you feel like your application, there might be detriments that you might be able to fix, or might be able to better, you know, come at a different point and kind of say, here's our plan with this, that you always have the opportunity to withdraw at any point prior to this going to a vote, and coming back without any prejudice, essentially, because obviously, once a vote, if something is, you know, denied...
I have a question.
Of course.
Do I need another variant for the, for, for, I'm not understanding quite clearly. Do I need another, do I need to pause, pause this and put another variant for just, just the garage?
We have the ability to handle it right now.
Okay.
Yes. We, we have the ability to make that essentially a condition of the, of this, if this is approved, to make it a condition of approval, but it is certainly something if, you know, if there's something you would need to talk to with the zoning code and try to get it squared away, you know, that would be an alternative route. It really, just calling multiple ways it can handle, I think we would definitely need some test, some good testimony, I'd kind of ask you to probably, you know, go back and forth a bit more with them regarding, regarding the garage, so we can really get, flesh that on the record.
We're speaking of the garage on, on the survey dent behind us, is it, is it, it's the top, it's marked shed?
The frame garage.
It's a shed, yeah.
The shed, yes.
The one that's marked frame garage is the one I'm referencing, on the right side?
Yeah.
Yeah, it says frame garage.
So that was 10, 12, it became 15, 10, and foot. 300 square feet.
Is it?
Yeah. 15, 10, 350 square feet.
It was 10 by 12 and became 15 by 10?
15 by 10, I believe, yes. Same electrical, just...
Just give me one second.
Sorry, 12 by 10 or 15 by 10?
It became 10 by 15.
Okay, okay, I get it.
10 by 15. The other one was 12 by 10, so it got bigger.
But the dimensions did change there?
Yes.
The 12, the 12 got smaller on one side, larger on the other? Okay, that's why I'm just making sure.
That's why it got a little closer to the fence, narrowed in closer.
Well, because of the alignment?
Yeah, it was, it wasn't actually squared to the fence, so, I mean, the original wasn't really squared to the fence.
There would be building permits necessary for that, correct?
Correct, yes.
And obviously, an inspection, I would guess?
Correct. And to date, I don't think any building permits, Mr. Edwards, definitely correct me if I'm wrong, have been filed for that garage?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chaney, would, if the, could the board entertain that part of the issue tonight?
I mean, would you?
I don't know what questions they're going to have, but...
You know, on your side of things, certainly with the, you know, not having the, and obviously, we know what was built here, but in terms of, you know, can you provide a little bit of input on your side of things, at least to them, so they need, so they could know what would need to be done?
We could conditionally approve it.
Yeah, I could certainly conditionally approve it, but...
Yeah, because I, I think at this stage, I think it's really just the applicant requesting an additional C variance for the garage setback.
Yeah. Just for the side setback, correct?
Correct, yes, yes.
Particular point, it's, it's one foot where...
One foot where 10 is required.
Required, it's supposed to be off of the property line there. Okay, anything else, Dan?
Nope, that's it.
Thanks. I'm going to go to the board, Mr. Edwards, okay? Thanks. I'm going to go to the board, Mr. Edwards, okay? I'm going to start on my left. Any questions, the applicant? Are you looking at, there's two surveys, by the way.
Yeah, no, that's...
One said shed, one is the garage.
See, they have this one.
So, do you, does everybody understand what we're talking about?
Yes.
Very good. So, the patio is 72, where it's two foot where three, three is required, and the LAR is .33 where 55 is required, Dan? Is that right?
It is 33% where 55% is required.
Okay.
This was already here? If, when you moved in, this was already here? Well, the shed, the shed was a...
You made it a little bigger, yeah.
You just expanded it.
Yeah, can we...
Expanded and made it bigger.
When did you guys purchase the property? I think we kind of start there.
2004.
2004, okay. So, I know we kind of got, you know, a little aside there regarding the garage, kind of. Sorry, I didn't want to...
Oh, that's okay. Hey, welcome to New Jersey. New York, too. So, we're only concerned about his missing that, that...
Well, the landscape area ratio, it's a setback and then a setback for the garage. It would be three, three different variances.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay for now.
Okay, as long as you have no questions. We can come back to this. We still have a public portion to go through. Going down, Mr. Stoner, anything?
No.
No? Leon, no?
No, sir.
You said you had a landscaper that was doing this and you said he filed for permits?
Well, he said he was going to...
Yeah, he was affiliated with the pool company. And they, they, they filed, I guess, the permits for everything.
Well, obviously, it was just for the pool.
No, no, no. It had, it had the map out of the pavers and everything. And then, and then he put like more pavers, whatever, but I didn't realize that he didn't go back and like update the permit. Like, they were in charge of that, you know?
Yeah, but you've been in town for 16 years, right?
Yeah, we've, we never had any money to do anything. We had one good year. It's the only thing we did to the house, you know? That's it.
But you needed a permit for your pool.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Well, because we hired the pool company and, yeah.
Right, but you needed a permit for your pool. You should have assumed when you're doing other, you know, improvements, you would have needed more permits.
Yeah, okay.
Let me check on my right. Ms. Andrews, anything?
No. The pool was done, according to what you said, the pool was, you had a permit to the pool.
Uh-huh.
And so that, and the pool, and the, and the pavers for the pool at that time.
Yeah.
So, the problem was he left and left the job undone, and you needed more pavers, which he never put in a permit.
No, no. He, he put more pavers, I guess, that were on the permit, but, I mean, I didn't even look at the permit. Like, I didn't realize that he was putting more pavers in, like he ordered everything. He was a headache. It took him a year to do everything. I was just like, "Just finish it, do whatever." I couldn't even get him to come. It was just a total disaster. Honestly, I didn't realize we did anything wrong. I mean, if we have to pick it up, we have, I mean, that's it. There's nothing I could do about it.
This was done in 21, 22?
Um, 21, yeah. 21, right?
21.
Yeah.
Took almost a year.
Yeah.
Ms. Testaverde?
No, I'm good. My question actually was if there were any, because a lot of the ground is, you know, accounted for. Is there any water problems, like your neighbors?
We actually had water problems prior to this. And, because we had a deck, and when we got flooded, like during, what is it, Sandy?
Yeah.
Some guy came out, because I was like, "Do we need to waterproof so we don't get flooding again?" And he was like, "It's the groundwater." He was like, "You know, in the future, if you ever do anything in your backyard," he said, "You should knock the whole deck down and just do, like, have it flat so that the water..." Because it was on such a pitch, so the water, we got flooded maybe twice. You know, we had water in the basement.
I'm, I'm all for, you know, improving your home.
Yeah.
Who's not for that?
So, I guess...
My concern is just the water, because it's a lot of...
No, it's actually better the water, because there's all areas. Yeah, there's all, like the grates, so now, now there's like more, the water just goes to the street. It's not...
There is areas where we can put landscape and stuff like that.
Side, though, like your neighbors? Does it affect your neighbors?
No.
No, it doesn't. Actually, we're fine with our, our neighbors on the sides. We're fine with them.
So, you mentioned you had a deck. What, you know, looking at that roughly, you know, what, yeah, is the concrete where the deck was?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's the general footprint?
That's the deck space.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Absent any other questions now, I'm, I'm going to go to a public portion, all right? We'll make sure that we don't have any complaints, or we may have people speaking on behalf, but I don't know. This is matter 58 dish 2023 Z. Location is 15 Jupiter Court. To legitimize paver patio and fire pit. Anyone here, new audience, want to be heard on this matter, please raise your hand or stand and come forward. No one has, I'll close the public portion. Board members, any final comments? I'm, I'm going to ask the applicant to make any final comments. We'll see if he wants to take, he and she want to take a vote.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
No, not at all.
It's not even attached, like, it's just...
We can detach it.
Yeah.
It's like sand on a bottom.
Because he never came back to finish stuff.
It's just, it's just...
So, it's not like it's cemented together or anything? It's cinder blocks.
It's not...
No, 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 no. It's just you put wood.
A wood?
Yeah, it's nothing like, you know...
It's not gas or anything like that?
It's just cinder blocks, basically.
No gas line out to it?
No.
No.
That's what my question was. So, thank you.
Anything on this side? And Mr. Chaney, anything?
Yeah, so, I mean, just kind of, you know, working through our, you know, kind of statutory framework here. So, there's not, I mean, there's nothing, and kind of you're just going to ask these questions and you can just kind of say yes or no, and that's, that's okay. So, there's no, nothing about your property that's, you know, with your guys, the variances you're seeking, there's no narrowness, shallness of, of the, or shape of the, of the property itself, correct? Okay, there's nothing that's preventing you from, you know, from a different, it's forcing you into this specific layout?
No.
Okay. Are you, what is on, are you, what properties are, can you describe the properties around you?
Which properties are around?
Describe the bordering properties. So, to, on each, so, you know, looking at this to the left, is that how similar to yours?
Oh, it's a cape.
Okay.
Yeah. They're both capes, actually, on both sides.
Okay, and what about behind?
Is that a cape, too?
That's a split level.
Is it?
Yeah, it's similar to ours, I believe. Yeah.
Okay, but similar, similar layout, similar kind of lot sizes, looking like, kind of, kind of narrow and then deep?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any inclines, any declines, any weird top, topographical things? No hills, no little...
No, it used to be like that.
Okay, I know you did mention the drainage issues. Okay. Any other wonky situations preventing? There's no, you know, giant trees, there's nothing, anything like that? Okay. So, you mentioned 2015, sorry, 2004 you bought it, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, you're installed this, you said you mentioned for the family, you want to enjoy the family. You got kids, you got...
Two boys, two girls.
You got two boys, two girls, so you got a large, you got a large family. And you're trying to enjoy it. Do you have, do you frequently, do you guys have parties there or, you know, or not? Do you guys, just for enjoyment, for relaxation?
We had parties there, got in trouble. We don't have parties.
I wasn't trying to get you in trouble. Everyone wants everybody entertaining.
We want our neighbors to like us, so, you know.
Yeah, of course. But, you know, for family enjoyment, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and it's in neighborhood, and, you know, you'd certainly say that, you know, something like a fire pit and, you know, whether it's a shed and, you know, all these things you're seeking for, certainly, you know, in character, pavers with, you know, backed in, you know, what someone would want in their backyard, right?
Right.
In, in your neighborhood backyard. Any, any, anything else you want to incorporate in terms of on the record or anything like that?
No, Mr. Chaney.
What was the reason for the shed, the alteration?
I have a home-based business.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true. But we also have, like, no room.
I have no room, so we're small fam, small house, big family, so we, we try to make things happen with what we have.
What's your business?
I'm a graphic installer. I wrap full, I do all gra, all types of graphics.
Okay. So, you just, you needed more room for the shed? You just kind of need more room to...
Yeah, but you don't have a garage, too.
Okay.
I don't have a workspace, and I don't work there, but I get my deliveries there and I use the storage. I got busy at one point and I needed expansion, so that was my goal to...
Essentially, we would want to buy a larger home.
Larger home, but that, that didn't work. My business collapsed a little bit, you know, and...
And now we lost, we lost three quarters of our business, so I'm so happy I didn't go buy a larger home, because we would be in big trouble right now, that's for sure.
So, you, I'm sorry to hear that, obviously. And so, you said, so you had to expand the shed, there's no storage. Is it, are using it for, you sort of mix things in there, business and?
Oh, yeah. Obviously, I'm using for like, you know, furniture, outside furniture storage. I do have a small little gym there. I use, you know...
Personal use.
Personal use.
Thank you.
But then it's also to store the boxes for work.
Of course, yes, of course.
Work doesn't take place there, it's personal use, correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Final question, final time. On my left, nothing? On my right? Would you like us to go for, take a vote here?
Sure.
Okay. This is for three different C variances. There, one is the patio setback. It's .7, .7 foot where two foot required. And then that's the property line, left side, and two feet where three foot required on the right side. That would be the first one. The second one is the landscape area ratio. It's at 33%, where 55% required. And of course, the extension to the shed, which we're calling either a shed garage, that's one foot because it's canted, correct? So, it's in line with the home?
Right.
Okay, so it's a bit of a hardship. It would have been hard to do it any other way?
Well, you got to follow the lines of...
Exactly. Okay, so that's one foot off where 10 is required. Am I correct, Mr. Chaney?
You're correct based on this, based on what we have on the denial of application.
Yep, okay. We could take them as a bulk, right? I mean, all together?
Yeah, and for the purposes, we'll say it's a shed, not a garage, I think.
Correct. Personally, a shed?
Yeah.
Okay. All under C1, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, C1 variance, board members, someone interested in moving if you're approval? I will. Is there a second?
Izzo.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
It's just a lesson that, that people don't realize they do things that are amiss. So, it's a lot easier to ask before you do things in your own homes. I know you moved in from another state, but you can find all this information through the township before you do any projects. And it would have saved you the time of having come here before us tonight. I hope you didn't find it too tough. My vote is yes. And I, and I, I know you want to do the best for your family and for your property, but please bear in mind, when you affect your property, sometimes it affects others, okay? There'll be a resolution prepared for this at our next meeting. Please meet with the building department or zoning officer and find out what you need for that personal shed. Thanks for being here tonight. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys. Okay, next matter, 65 dash 2023 Z. It's Marjorie Jodry. I hope I said that right. This is our six zone, block 15548, lot 1. No, 138. 34 Exeter Street is the physical location. This requires a C variance. The applicant proposes a 6 by 11 covered portico porch, 23.4 foot from the front yard, where, from the property line, where 25 required. Folks, good evening. Both of you going to be testifying, I would assume? Board attorney will swear you in.
All righty. So, Marjorie?
Marjorie.
Marjorie, okay. All right, Marjorie, can you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear as the truth of the testimony for which you're about to provide?
I do.
Thank you. And are you her husband or...?
Yes.
Okay, and what's your, say your name?
My name is James Schlechter.
Okay, one second.
Spell the last name, sir? Thank you, sir.
That's why I don't use it.
Correct.
Okay. All right, did you raise your right hand? Thank you. Do you solemnly swear as the truth of the testimony for which you're about to provide?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Same is going to apply. Whoever wants to take the lead, please inform the board of what's going on there, what you want to do or what you did.
We didn't, we didn't do it.
What you want to do, why you want to do.
Okay.
All of the above, okay?
Yes.
Go ahead, ma'am.
So, we want to build a, a portico over the front entrance of our house and increase the, like, you know, the cement slab step as you, like this.
Walkway?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what you call it.
Step up?
Yeah, the step up. Just so we can put a couple of chairs there, just like a little porch kind of thing.
Okay.
Just, we're a little bit confused, I think, at one point about the terminology of portico. It's not designed for a car or anything like that. It's just essentially a covered...
Yeah, it's a little porch, but it's not, yeah, it's not a full porch, which I would really love, but...
It's for enhancing the look of the home, right?
Yeah, I could show you. And it's for sitting outside. Yeah.
Functions to cover while you want to sit there in the rain?
Yeah, exactly.
Very nice. Mr. Holland?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, so the applicant is here today requesting a single C variance, where they propose a 6 foot by 11 foot covered front porch, 23.4 feet from the front yard property line, where they do require 25 feet minimum. So, pretty straightforward, I think. Just one single C variance. That's about all I got for you.
Front yard setback, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Board has dealt with, I was just looking at your home here in a picture, and I see exactly what you want to do. It would be just a little bit wider than the, which is not our concern, by the way.
I have a photo, I have a Photoshop picture if you want to see.
No, that's okay. I don't think the board does either, but it's not necessary in this case. You're coming up just this short. I mean, in many ways.
One foot six inches.
And I guess that's probably because of the way it has to be built?
Yeah.
In other words, they couldn't trim it back because it wouldn't be functional?
Right.
I've got questions on my left?
It's basically just the step. That's what it is.
We got, we've had this, and a matter of fact, it's one of the issues that we, on the yearly report, have tried to change for the homeowners, so that they wouldn't... The problem is, if you don't define a stop point, there would never be a stop point. So, 25 is not arbitrary. It's set for a reason, but then if we just left it up to the homeowner, they might go all the way out.
Right.
Somewhere it has to end, and I, like I said, you're just a little bit, little bit over. Questions on my left?
I'm good.
Nothing?
How about electrical outlet? Do you have an electrical outlet there for the lamp or something?
Electrical lamp out there or outlet? No.
You have, you have a light over your door now, don't you?
Yes.
I'm sure you will.
We have, we have two sconces already on the side of the house, so that would be under the portico.
I figure if you're reading the newspaper or something, you might want a little lamp out there.
There's nothing wrong if you want to do that, by the way.
Yeah, no, I didn't. I just...
Would that be covered under this variance as well?
Yeah, you can, you can put a light out there and it'll probably be, if you're, if there's one over your door right now, you can do the same thing. You don't have to. I'm merely saying.
Just suggesting.
Mr. Sullivan wants me to put a light there.
Vice Chairman?
No, I'm good.
All right. On my right?
No.
Lady Scud? Okay. Mr. Chaney, have any questions?
How long have you owned the property for?
1998, 26 years or 25?
1998, okay. In terms of just, you know, obviously, it's a de minimis in the grand scheme of things, in terms of with what you're looking for, is that back? Anything else in terms of, you said it's, it's kind of required for installation, that that specific length is required, the 6 by 11, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I think that's really, you know, looking at it. I'm just going off the top of my, off my head.
Yeah, Ms. Jodry, you, you had no plans on enclosing it, correct?
No.
And you're not going to enclose it?
I'm not going to enclose it.
That would be a whole nother issue.[1740.34]
Yes.
Okay.
You can, you can comment.
And there's no plumbing going out there, just the electric to the, to the top?
No.
Right now, there's no plan for that.
There, yeah.
Okay.
There's existing electric.
I got it.
Yeah.
Anything else you want to tell the board?
It's gonna look really nice.
It's what?
It's going to look really nice.
I'm, I'm positive you're gonna make it nice. You even brought something there.
I have a Photoshop.
Let me see the picture.
Okay. This is from...
I think it would be rude of me not to look at the picture.
I think so. So, the top is the existing house, and then I...
You're kidding?
You should become a designer.
Ah, very nice. Show the board.
I want that.
Yes.
We're gonna find out. Thank you.
Well, I am gonna have you...
I'm gonna go to a...
Once you get out to the mic, just to say something for the mic, what you just said there. You did say that you Photoshop that from a house around the block, correct?
Yes, I believe they had a permit, but I...
So it fits them with the nature of the community, right?
Excuse me?
It fits, it's in, it's in character with the nature of the community.
Most of my model in Sarwood South, a lot of houses have this. Sometimes it's smaller and just like almost decorative, and sometimes it's larger, like I went for the chairs. But it's because my model is the only one that doesn't have a small sitting area.
It's a good thing it fits the nature of the community.
It keeps in, in, in...
Uniform.
Uniform, yeah, thank you, uniformity of the area.
Right.
Right?
Right.
You gonna let your husband have, have anything to say, or no?
Um...
He doesn't have to.
Wait, do you have anything to say?
Up there whispering.
No, he does not.
Okay, all right. You wouldn't mind if I go to a public portion, would you?
Not at all.
The matter, this is matter 65-2023Z. The location is 34 Exeter Street. They want to put a covered portico on the front of their house, which I've been assured is going to look very nice. Anyone have any comments? If you do, please raise your hand and come forward. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public portion. We'll go back to you. Final comments, ma'am?
None.
None. Board members on my left, any problems that you want to discuss? Board members on my right?
No.
Comes down to voting time. Would you like me to call for a vote?
Please.
I will. Someone interested, this is a, hold on, this is a front yard setback, 23, 4 from the front yard property line, where 25 is the minimum, so we're at a foot and a half. Anyone interested in moving this for approval?
Andrews, move it.
Is there a second?
Izzo?
Izzo wrote, there's a second. Roll call, please.
Is there's a second?
He is.
Okay. Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Nice choice on your project. Good luck. You'll have a resolution available at the next meeting. You can't do it until you get your resolution.
Okay, you're all invited to come sit on the floor. And also, I just want to tell you that I worked with Millie DeNegro for the planning board.
I don't want you putting things on the record that really aren't applicable to the application, okay? I'm, I'm just doing that for a good reason. All right, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you all.
Happy New Year. Next application, 69-2023Z, Candido Carrasco. Uh, I probably didn't say that right, and I apologize. It's our six zone, block 1558, 4 lot 600, 214 Cindy Street for an extended driveway. Sir, I hope I didn't say your name. Too bad.
You did all right there.
Okay, all right.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year to you, sir. You've already been through two, so it's, it's gonna be your turn. Uh, the applicant seeks to legitimize a 12 foot by 5 by 24 driveway expansion that was previously done without zoning approval. The driveway was installed at zero from the front side yard property line, where 5 is required. Okay, once again, you can go at your own pace. Before we let you do that, you're gonna be sworn in. I guess you're both gonna talk, because I know you're gonna have something to say.
All right, who wants to raise their right hand first?
Mr. Chaney?
You let me go first?
All right. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly, do you solemnly swear as the truth of the testimony for which you're about to provide? Thank you. And just, it's Grace, right? Grace, correct, okay? And, Mr. Carrasco?
Yes.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear as the truth of the testimony for which you're about to provide?
I do.
It's Candido, right?
Yes, Candido Carrasco.
All right, sir, whoever can go first and proceed and tell us why that driveway is there now?
Okay. All right, so my wife and I moved in in 2002. Uh, we decided, it was the original driveway and the sidewalk. So being there so long, the sidewalk was pretty, pretty bad. Uh, the driveway was in pretty bad condition, so we decided to invest in the, in the front of the home. Um, so before we did that, we actually drove around the neighborhood and looked at other driveways, because we had no idea what we really wanted. And a lot of the homes that are in the neighborhood, the guy took a few houses to my right, neighbor across the street to my right, they all have pretty much the same driveway. Then realizing that after we got the work done, I believe after 2019, they changed the variance where you needed to have like four or five feet. So it became an issue. When we discussed this with the contractor, they told, they told us that we didn't need a permit. Um, so, and, and taking their advice and, you know, not really doing our research and, you know, understanding that we did need one, we went ahead and did the work. So now that's why we're here. Um, you know, we think, uh, we think that it definitely improved what we had. Um, you know, my neighbor that lives right next door, that if it would affect anyone is here. He gave up his night for us tonight, so just to go show how, how good my neighbors are. So, um, you know, being there so long, we really didn't realize we were doing something wrong, so that's what we...
Go ahead.
My turn?
Sure, sure, by, by all means.
Uh, so the work was done September 2023, um, and we actually used the same contractor, the same company that the neighbor, a few homes down from us used. And we literally said, we want what they did, because they did such a nice job on their driveway. So the work was done while we weren't at home, so like, and we did ask in advance if we needed a permit. He goes, no, I've done six homes on this street. You don't need a permit. I said, okay, no problem. Um, but once the work was done, it did look, it looks beautiful. So I have no complaints, but when we found out there was an issue with the size of, I guess we were supposed to leave some grass there. Um, but we have a whole lot of grass in the back and on the other side, like, there's a lot. Um, but, you know, we want to do what, what we have to do. Um, but we haven't really gotten any complaints of anything. The neighbors that have seen the work, they, they have complimented us. They, they love how it looks. So, um, hopefully, it's, it's not an issue here.
Anything else you want to tell me right now? You'll get another chance. I'm gonna go, I'll go to the zoning officer. Sir?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, yeah, so the applicant is here tonight seeking a, a single C variance for a driveway setback, uh, where they are, um, they have completed the work already, and the driveway is installed zero feet from the side yard property line, where 5 feet is required. Um, yes, uh, Ms. Carrasco was correct in saying there were a couple properties along this stretch of road that seemed to be all same work done by the same contractor with the same issues. But yes, just single C variance for driveway setback.
Thank you. Uh, I toured there just the other day, and it's interesting that you brought that up, and you, you're correct. There, your neighbor to the, you're looking at your front door to the left has it, two doors down has it, the diagonal has it. As a matter of fact, I think that community was probably put up post-Korea War. I'm thinking they're probably 60s, late 50s and early 60s. And they're all kind of, not cookie cutter, but bi-levels that were on kind of narrow properties. And, well, not necessarily narrow properties, but the house seems to be offset on either sides. If I could, if I'm saying that correctly, where you have a space that your property line goes to, but your driveway doesn't, because they built single car driveways. In fact, I think that probably more than 50% of the homes on that road have all done the same thing at some time or another. And I might be underestimating it 50%. So I don't know what happened with you and why you're here, but, uh, I can tell you that running the whole length and that, through the community, everybody's done the same thing, only because families got bigger. When those were built, there was one car and one car only in the home, and that was probably used by dad when he went to work.
Yeah.
And there was no need. Now you have children and you have four cars.
Four cars.
Now, having said that, there's still an ordinance, and, and it says five foot. So it's not about the, it's not about the gentleman who, the contractor who told you, you don't need a permit. The problem is, he built it too big. You can't encroach on a property line. Now, when you're at zero, that's kind of a magical number, because you're either on the other person's line or you're on your line. It's almost impossible to be on the line. So I know that somebody's gonna come up, because you've already said that, and say it's not a problem. But that's what the, the variance means. You can't get five foot close to the property line. It's not about grass. It's about encroaching on other people's property. So while I understand your position, and I'm sure that, I'm sure I'm gonna hear that he doesn't have a problem with it, that's, that's the reason you're here, not because of a permit. There may be a permit, but that, that has nothing to do with why you're here. Let me see if, what the other board members think, okay? And they might have some questions. I'll start on my left-hand side.
Oh, you said it perfect.
Mr. Stoner?
Um, I have a question for the zoning board. They want exactly what the neighbors had, so with the neighbors in compliance, too?
Um, I think this board has already seen one of the other applications along this stretch of Cindy. Um, and I think there's a third one. Maureen, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yes.
Yeah, I think there were three homes that were done that were all in violation. They were all kind of, the complaint was filed at the same time for all three homes. I think this board has already approved one. This is a second. I believe there's another third one in the works.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Stoner?
No, no, I was just, no, I was just a little confused how they want exactly to see what the neighbors had, but I'm trying to remember the, the first one that came in that got approved. I guess it's been a while.
I believe there was one, but...
Yeah.
Okay. It's not that uncommon, but...
The, the one that was really tricky is the neighbor across the street that's had it for quite some time.
Yeah.
This wasn't done anytime soon, so...
Mr. Scogno?
See, that's the situation we have. You're right on the line. You're not only on your line, you're on your neighbor's line. And whether we approve this or not, we're, we're gonna be subject to another one coming up. And you, you, you said that all the neighbors are in favor, and they loved it. But why are you here? Somebody didn't love it.
I think it has to do with the company itself that did the work, and so, because the...
So, what is it? Forget it, but the company...
Well, let me, well, let me finish.
All right.
I think it has to do with the company that did the work, and maybe there was a disgruntled customer, because they're not the best people to work with. As a matter of fact, when they finished the work, by the time we got home, they were gone.
I don't want to disparage any contractors, so I...
But they didn't return the calls.
Yeah, I, I, no, I just don't want...
Tried to reach out to them. They weren't the easiest to work with. So I'm just thinking that maybe someone they worked with had an issue and is maybe...
No, I, I, I get that, but I, I don't want to bring personal...
Oh, no, no.
Contractors in to, to put their name on a record anywhere, okay? So we can just, we're gonna leave it at that, where it may very well be that they weren't, uh, reading the survey correct. So I don't know why, why they do it. One of the problems you wind up going now is if we want to sell that house...
That's right.
You're not gonna get a clear title. So that's something to think about in the future. You have to be off of your line.
Because the approval of the variance stays with the property. That, you sell that house, that, that variance stays with the property line. So the next person that, that your neighbor sells, and he comes, so it's, it's a little problem there. Yeah, but my question is, he's mentioning the three folk, the three families that are dealing with... Were they on the property line? But what I'm saying is, obviously, there's something's wrong. But what I'm saying is, the, the families that have that property already done the same way, did they have that issue? Are they gonna have that issue when they sell? That's what I'm saying. It's gonna keep coming up. I know that when someone, when we decide to sell our home, the way we take care of our home, the way my neighbors take care of their homes, not gonna have a problem selling my house.
It's the title company, sir.
It's the title. No, I understand, but what I'm saying is that we didn't decide to just do this...
No, no.
On our own.
We understand.
We literally drove around and looked and was like, wow, okay, we see what people have, so we decided we wanted...
As a matter of fact, you pulled over when the, he saw the guys that were working, and he goes, can you come to our house when you're done? And all we said was, we want what you did there. That's what we want done to our...
And I, I think the, the board understands that, and it's just, I think the board's, you know, kind of having an internal question. You know, I don't want to say internal crisis, but internal question of, okay, if we, you know, if we grant 10 of these applications, have we changed the fundamental, you know, character and law lines of the neighborhood in doing so? Because each, you know, each time it shifts it just a little bit, right? Sorry, just cut one out up there.
Something happened.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so that's, I think, the, you know, the questions that are being asked here are not of you. It's just of, you know, hey, when this snowballs, then what happens? Because, you know, yes, it's one of those things, maybe not one, but, you know, if 10 properties have this done, and then do, what happens with all these titles when it's two abutting ones? And, you know, everything becomes shifted, and you can't tell who, where one driveway begins and when, where one starts. You know, I'll end it with that on there.
I'm gonna go back to the board's questions yet.
I wasn't finished. I, I noticed that, did you go for a permit for the shed in the back? Um, I believe we, yeah, we have... Because that's right on the property line also. No, that's three feet away from the fence.
We're not here on that matter.
I know we're not here on that matter. I just wanted to see if they're inclined of going for permits.
What about this space saver?
No, that, that space saver is, that's, that's okay. I'm talking, it's three feet away from the fence, because we have a pool pump, uh, all the, all the electrical outlets that's been there. All of that was there before we even bought the house. Yeah. That was already before. I just want to emphasize that a permit is to protect you. No, I understand that. So don't be afraid to go for permits. I've been there for over 20 years. 20 years. We've been, we've been grinding to keep this house up. Two new roofs, new windows, new kitchen, all of that stuff we did, everything had to get done the right way. So we understand. We just got a new water heater. We called the service. They got the permit for us. We also tend to lean on the contractor to help us as well.
Which we shouldn't do.
But that's besides the point. That's irrelevant. It's about what's at hand now. So, in doing the driveway, we really truly believe that we weren't doing anything wrong. And the way it's set up, where my fence is and where my neighbor's fence is, that's sort of like where the line is. You know, there's still a little... There's a couple of... There's about five inches, but it's not directly on the line because it's a PVC fence. You can see from where mine starts and ends and his starts and ends, so...
Let me just see if any of the other board members, I didn't finish yet.
Yeah, I got it. First of all, it's wonderful that, you know, you say you wanted to do what everybody else did, as the attorney just stated, though. Now, you're changing our ordinances and our variances of what's required. Whether you thought there was a permit or everybody else had a permit, it's snowballing. It's snowballing to this board all the time. Whether it looks great, fine. So, and my point is, when you mentioned your fence being five inches off the property line, obviously, you got a permit for that because that's what Old Bridge requires. So, you knew that much, so how did you not know it for your driveway?
Well, no, I'm saying that that's what's left right now from the driveway to Lou's property. That's what's left.
Five inches from your fence, you said. Your driveway goes right to the property line.
Yeah.
So, I'm saying, you knew that you needed five inches for your fence when you put it up. So, you would have had to assume...
Your fence, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Yeah, the fence that we had there was existing and we replaced it with a new fence.
Okay, but right, but you replaced with a new fence at five inches. My point is, that was a permit. You need a permit for a fence. You needed to know how the, you know, fence was going to be put up and what was required.
I think you mean shed. He mentioned shed. No one said fence.
I'm not talking about a shed. I'm talking about, you mentioned that there's five inches between your property for your fences. That's what's required here in Old Bridge. To be off your property line. You took your driveway straight to the property line. So, if you knew your fence had to be five inches off the property line, you would have had to, I would assume, think, I should get a permit and see what...
Ma'am, I didn't say that I knew that I needed five inches for my fence. The fence that I have was removed and was replaced exactly where it was. So, what I'm saying is that from where my driveway ends to where Lou's house starts, there's about five inches and then his driveway starts. I put gravel, little white rocks, to make it look nice.
I'm not saying it doesn't look...
No, what I'm saying is that that's what's left. It's not directly on it to where you can differentiate between us from where my property ends and his.
Okay, but my point being, the fence was done right, the driveway wasn't.
Correct. And now, we understand that's why we're here, okay?
Okay, but...
Ms. Davis. On this side, ladies. Ms. Andrews?
Yeah, I just want to know, the one that was in the same neighborhood... Oh, I'm sorry. The one that was done in the same neighborhood, were they also at zero on the property line?
I don't have those applications in front of me, so I cannot confirm, but I do not know at this time.
Okay, and the one that's coming up, are they zeroed? Would you know that?
I don't know. At this time, no. I don't have those applications in front of me.
Okay.
I have another question to ask. Before this was done, what you had there before? What was there?
So, we had, like the chairman mentioned, that it's an older home. So, we had a single drive, a one-car driveway. So, when we first bought the home...
We had tar, right?
Yeah, it's asphalt, like the blacktop. So, then we had all grass on the left side, just grass.
So, did you know the measurements of that tar, the actual? Because I would think that when you decide to change it, they do exactly what you have laid out the same way.
Yeah, and well, that's what sort of we did, except we sort of doubled it. So, basically, what we wanted to do, since we have so many cars and having all of them in the street, at least this way, my wife and I both get to park in the driveway. And then, at least the girls can just park in the street. Because already, one of my daughter's cars got hit. Someone hit it, ran off. And we figured it out, but... So, there's always a chance of that stuff. So, we just wanted to make it a little more comfortable for us and, of course, make it look nicer. So, we didn't realize that we were going to have these issues. Yeah, by doubling the driveway.
It's the same, too. It's blacktop.
Yeah, we just did asphalt.
What happened to the storm drain that used to be out there along the curb line?
Yeah.
So, it doesn't interfere?
No, sir, no. We didn't do anything to the curb or the apron or anything like that.
All right. I have to go to a public portion, and I know you have someone that's going to speak on your behalf.
Thanks.
This is... Location's 214 Cindy Street, 69-2023C. Someone want to speak on this matter? You come forward, sir. You can bring him with you.
Hi, neighbor at 216.
Hold on one second.
Sure.
Yeah, so, can you say your name, sorry?
Luigi Quaglia. It's Q-U-A-G-L-I-A.
Q-U-E-A-G-L-I-A. A-G. Okay, and Louis, you said?
Luigi, yes.
Luigi, sorry. Neighbor... What's your address?
216. The direct neighbor.
Okay. Okay. Do you solemn swear us the truth of testimony, Robert, provide?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
What does he want to tell us, Mr.?
Well, it was, like they said...
If I looked at his house, you're to the left.
To the left, yeah. Actually, the only house that you see against his. Many of our neighbors have the exact same driveway. He and Ms. Grace are saying the exact right things. Tonight is the perfect case of why they needed to do the work. I mean, they can take their cars off the street, put it in the driveway. They don't have to worry about the plows or anything coming around and, you know, keep safe, keep everybody off the roads, everything. I'm right there. They asked me, made sure we were okay. Everything was fine. We've had stuff done. We always clear everything with each other, make sure stuff is up to par. We want to make sure that everybody in the community is happy with everything that anybody does all the time. We all talk about our lawns, our bushes, every little thing that we have, trees, things. I mean, at one point, we had the council clear a little free library for my wife. Everybody in the neighborhood was for it. Everybody's together. So, if anything, everybody backs this. I don't know who would complain about it, but it's clearly happened and it's a shame.
Yeah, and it is a nice neighborhood and people do care for their homes. And it makes the community stronger when you do interact with each other. The problem is, it sits right on the lot line. There's no differentiation from one to the other. So, that's where the problem comes in. Had it been another foot over, he'd be here for a variance relief for four foot, but it wouldn't be on... It would still be on his property. This is the issue that we're faced, zero. So, it's your lot and his lot.
Correct.
I guess it depends on how you look at that, but it's a good point, you see.
But, I mean, I would argue that whoever comes in to see the house would obviously see that this work is already done and it's already there. So, I mean, I know you don't want it to snowball and I completely understand. But at the same time, I mean, somebody would see that this is already preexisting.
Most people wouldn't read the survey. Title company will.
Understood.
Does it provide any... Is there any drainage or any issues on your side? Do they... Is it topographed fully? Is it flat? Does it... I notice, obviously, there was a storm drain. There's no issues with the storm drain there?
No, whatsoever.
Is there... When it borders your side, borders of grass on your side, correct? It's not asphalt? It's not adjoining asphalt?
It's actually... Yeah, it's driveway down to the...
So, driveway meets driveway, so to speak?
Actually, driveway meets rock wall because the same company did not do a great job many, many years ago. But we prided it up for them.
So, is there any other border between... Obviously, there's no setback. Is there any other border between your properties? Any demarcation?
No, yeah, I mean, there's a small strip of, like, I guess it's paverstone at this point.
You have paverstone a little higher than his property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, there wouldn't be any water going into his.
Ours is a little bit higher, yeah. If anything, they were the ones that... Yeah. But, um...
And that's your paverstone. It's not like an inter... It's not like, you know, demarcating.
Yeah, no, no, it's not. And honestly, that's just because it was a slope and we just wanted to prided it up for them. Uh, no, I'm good, chairman. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Daniel, just a quick question. So... With the setback, was it changed in 2019?
So, prior to what me and Damian Gill used to use, was anything prior to 2016? Damian had started working for Old Bridge in 2016 and there was never a requirement for a permit for a driveway. So, he implemented that when he had started here and we've always used the date January 1st, 2016. Anything that to present requires a permit for a driveway. Anything prior to 2016, there was no requirement for a permit for a driveway.
Okay, thank you. I want that on the record.
There is... Basically, there is now, though.
There is now, yeah.
Post-16.
Correct, yes.
All right. Anything else you want to tell us, sir?
Nope.
All right, thank you for your appearance. Mr. Chaney, we just come to the problem is the zero. And I'm trying to think the last one we had and we made a move at a foot, if I'm not mistaken. It was on the lot... And we asked them to cut a foot off, so it's not on the property line. That might be your easiest remedy. I don't... What's the base? Did you do a whole base with it, like a cinder or stone?
Paver outline, so, like...
Outlined with pavers.
I mean, the paver could be removed, that line of pavers?
Yeah, we... I don't know that the board would agree to one foot, but we've done that before, where somebody had encroached to the point where it was creating a water problem. Now, in this case, that's not you. I'm just talking about a case that had come before us where they were literally on the lot line and the water was going on to the other person's property. That's where the complaint came from. That's not the situation here. The neighbor was... Would have agreed that if it was at least a foot off, it would... We called it... We canted it where they had it canted, so no water went on the other person's lot.
Yeah, over here, they've kind of raised the potential of something as like a curbing or something like that on a one-foot curbing would...
Well, there's... If you look at this picture, you can see that this is actually better. This... For those watching on TV, we're looking at actual photo from the property. You see, I have the paver on that.
Yeah, so, there's a paver curve.
What if they were to build up where it was almost like, I won't say retaining wall, not quite that high, but what if that was? Does the end of the property line over here? Okay, so, over here. So, if they built that up, they would then be with it?
If they moved the pavers in, if they moved the pavers in right on top, what are they? These sixers or twelves? Is that sixers?
Six, I think they're six. Four by six.
In other words, this way, they wouldn't have to cut, but they would...
No, they wouldn't have to cut, but they...
They would rain... They would be...
They could put it over and then just put soil back in it.
They'd be within the survey, so that wouldn't be a problem. It's asphalt, right?
Yeah. So, the pavers... The pavers could be... Yeah, the pavers could be moved.
Right, and the asphalt could actually be cut. Because my brother-in-law gets it for service.
I don't think he's even have... He wouldn't... He could probably put the pavers on top of the asphalt.
Every two... Right.
Right.
But that's not for us to decide.
No.
I'm making a suggestion.
No, I... To make it uniform, I know they probably want it uniform, flat, you could actually...
Oh, no.
If it was concrete, different story. You can ruin it.
Asphalt's very easy, yeah.
But asphalt, you could cut right through it with that... They use a hot tool. My brother-in-law did it.
Yeah, right down the line. If the board were to conditionally approve it if you moved the pavers over, so you're not... You're no longer on the lot line, would you be... Consider doing that? No, no. Yeah, it's going to wind up being, you know, at a foot line. The ordinance is five. I'm trying to get them some relief.
They get a variance for one foot.
I mean, it's properly done. It looks beautiful, but unfortunately, you're on zero... You're zero, so you're sharing a lot line.
And you do need to keep in mind, if one has been granted before and is similarly situated and for similar construction, that, you know, that is certainly something that favors granting it just because you have already set that precedent and does open, you know, the board's a certain...
Taking the ordinance, is that something we should consider then if we're going to be approving these for a foot?
I don't think we're approving them for a foot.
That's what you're doing.
It's still five, but I'm thinking that...
Is it Leon's? That's Leon, can you turn your mic on?
Go ahead, you can repeat it. Go ahead, you can repeat it.
I understand what you're saying, Leon.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, the ordinance is for five. I understand that. But as these applicants come, are we going to then go, okay, we'll do it for a foot? If you can come back?
Well, that's...
I mean, is that something we're going to be faced with?
As we all know, each and every application is based on its own merit.
This neighborhood is filled with this same type of environment and whoever suggested this applicant to come here tonight might do the same for another.
That might happen, but again, each application is decided and judged on its own merit.
I just want to know, because Daniel said that there are quite a few in this particular neighborhood. How did it come about that they were...
I don't know that... There are many, many, many homes in there have doubled the size of their driveways. I don't know that they're on the lot line.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
And I don't know the property. I don't know what...
You don't know what year it was done. That's our issue. If it was done before 2016...
2016, yeah, that's what the problem is.
That was fair dinkums, but now it's not.
And certainly, we don't expect you to provide that testimony. We either, you know... We're not asking you to answer those questions.
Daniel, one more question. With him being right on the property line and everything else, where's his sewer line run?
I'm sorry, you asked where his sewer line runs?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I don't think it's marked on the survey.
I'm kind of curious, is the driveway on the sewer line, too?
I'm not sure. I would assume if there was a sewer line there, there would be a sewer line easement, which I don't see on his survey, but I'm not sure if there's a sewer line under there or not.
I'm sorry, it's just a fair question.
It would probably be not... Well, it wouldn't be that far over. The house ends where the single driveway was. So, the sewer line wouldn't be out that far. It probably runs somewhere... Probably runs...
Outside of the house is the concrete slab.
Yeah, it probably runs your other side.
Concrete slab on that side.
I just wanted to know that...
No, no, I'm just letting you know.
Because it wouldn't be out here.
I don't want you cutting the driveway through the sewer line, too.
That wouldn't be good.
We're at a point here where what I suspect, sir, is that there's mixed emotion on the board and you may or may not get a favorable vote. So, I'll give you a couple of choices. One, you could reconfigure this thing and come back. Two, you could agree to something conditional if the board wants to agree to have you move off the lot line, where we have granted that hardship before to move it back. The size of the paver, I guess, is six. It's probably... Probably should be cut at one foot, where I think we could come to an agreement. I think. But I'm not prosecuting this application. You're prosecuting. You're telling us what it is. So, I don't get to make that decision. I'm merely throwing it out there. It's something you might want to think about. And you don't have to think about it tonight if you don't want to. If you want to go and seek some advice, you could do that and I'll give you a continuance. We'll take no vote. But if you take a vote now and you lose, you're going to wind up having to comply with five foot. So, again, I don't know that the board would agree. They have before. We have done it. And it's in recent history. It's only within the last couple of years. So, why don't you... I don't want to force you to make a decision. You could get back on the calendar again, so you don't have to... You're not pushed into a corner.
I mean, we'd like to keep it the way it is.
I don't think that's going to happen.
I understand that that's a problem, so if we take a vote now and... So, what are my options? Moving it five inches from where it is now?
Well, one foot.
Just one whole foot?
One foot off the property line.
I mean, I don't have a choice.
Well, you do.
It doesn't feel like I'm being left with a choice.
Well, you're...
Would you remove the pavers?
I mean, it's already down. I mean, I really don't...
So, I mean, this is the first project we've done to the outside of the house since we've moved into the neighborhood. And it was, you know, a labor of love, like it was money set aside that we specifically wanted to get this work done. So, you know, it's cost me almost $8.50 just to do this whole process. And it's very financially taxing, so...
Completely understood, ma'am, but what I'm trying to say is the board's here to try to help.
No, I understand, but.
And I can't. We cannot do what we can't do.
No, I get it. But whatever option we have, it's still money that we don't have. So we will do whatever we need to do, but it's disheartening that we have to go through this, when all I wanted to do was make the house look beautiful and make the garage. Like, it makes no sense. Zero sense.
I understand your frustration, but the point is, we can't grant something that we're not allowed to grant. You're on the lot line.
I get it. I'm.
We just had a similar situation, not with a driveway, but people did improvements to their home, probably a few hundred thousand dollars' worth. They were on somebody else's line, and they put a fence over on their property. We can't grant relief from that. We didn't do it, and we can't tell somebody it's now legal when it's not legal. The board attorney will back me. We can't approve something that is not.
Yeah. You said it precisely like that. And it's, you know, I don't want to rehash things because I know we've gotten to, you know, this cycle of kind of rehashing things, and it's, there's kind of the options, and you might find it best served to have this carried, and maybe in the meantime, you are able to maybe figure out what it might cost of it done. Maybe you can do it yourself. I don't know. I don't know how handy you are. I.
No, let's just, yeah, let's just, we'll take the vote now, and then we'll just deal.
What I'm suggesting, what I'm suggesting here is that you probably have a dissenting vote, and you may have a dissenting vote at one foot. Why don't you come back, get a plan together, think about what you're going to do, find out. I don't want you to make a hastily decision. If you make me call for a vote now, I fear that you're not going to get an approval. I'm telling you from my experience sitting on the board.
I appreciate it.
So that would be my suggestion. I don't think I'm overstepping my boundaries, counsel.
No, I think there, you know, I think you can feel the temperature in the room. There's hesitation with ramifications of, you know, of granting several ones, and so I'm trying to set you best up for success, potential success, without pinning yourselves into a, you know, a quick, potentially rash decision that might undo, you know, something that you have spent your hard-earned money on. And we understand that, you know, a contractor, you know, told you certain things, and, you know, by all means, you have your own recourse against that contractor. But by no means, you know, certainly, I think we hear this all the time, that, you know, a contractor came in and someone comes in and says, "Contractor didn't tell me this," or "Contractor said the permits were all good," and they weren't, or, you know, so on and so forth. You certainly have your own recourse against that contractor as potentially might several of your neighbors, but that's going off topic, so I'll let you.
Yeah, again, I don't want to back you into a corner, but I'm trying to look out for your best interest, and I think everybody shares that sentiment, or at least I would think all the board members share that sentiment. And it's getting emotional right now for you, so my suggestion was we reschedule for another meeting, okay? It'll give you time to think, take pause, and rationally work this out one way or another, okay? Maureen, could we have a date?
February 15th.
I understand, but why, we're coming, so.
It's not going to cost you anything more to come back, ma'am.
We're going to take a break, and then we're going to come back and do what? Is the driveway going to look different? Are you going to take the?
Well, this is the things that you can decide upon in privacy on your own.
This month gives you the time to decide whether you're going to do that or not, or, you know, you can come back next month, and we can go from there. But this gives you the time to, you know, take a breath and a step back and figure out what works best for you, knowing what you have heard and seen here tonight.
The other homes that had the driveways done with the same company, I mean, I'm just curious because I haven't, though driveways all look the same. It doesn't appear like they're changing anything, and their driveways are, look like they're the same as ours. So I'm just curious.
No one's picking on you.
No, 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 no. It's not a matter of us being picked on, but.
I don't know that, I don't know the surveys. I don't know whether those are on the lot line. Yours is on the lot line. I can't approve something that's there.
Gotcha. Okay.
Probably if you were six foot off the lot line, you'd be in a lot better shape. But because we can't approve something like that, it's just, we can't do it.
So the next steps, sir, what? Do we reschedule, or?
You'll have some time to figure out a plan of what you may want to do.
Okay.
And it's only February 15th, so it's not that far off.
And if we move the pavers there that are?
Why don't you, why don't you, why don't you make a plan? My suggestion would be this. You can do anything you want. It's your application. My suggestion would be, go home, think about this rationally, take some measurements, do what you think you can probably do, least expensive. Don't do anything. Come back. Don't spend a dime. Come back. Doesn't cost you anything except coming out for a couple hours on another night. Talk to the board. Tell them what your plan is. You may have a completely different attitude and say, okay, you're off the lot line. Maybe people say, okay, fine. It looks nice. You did a nice job. You got misinformation, but we can't do something that's not legal. Because we'd be wrong.
Right, but we didn't know.
No, I understand, sir. And most people don't. That's what.
What you should do is set up a meeting with the zoning board officer to say, this is what we want to do, so make sure you.
He could definitely.
I'm going to need some help because we really.
That's what I'm saying.
That's the guy.
You can talk to him in that one month.
That's the guy to talk to.
I'm here Monday through Friday, 7 to 3. Come see me anytime.
Right, so do that. You know, think about it, and then talk to him and help you guide you with a game plan that's going to work.
Okay.
And the board will be favorable to give you extended time. It's not like, okay, we want it done in two months, you know?
Right, okay.
All right?
All right, we think that might be the best for you, okay? So we're going to continue this matter. This is 69 dish 2023 Z. The location's 214 Cindy Street. This matter's going to be continued to February 15th, no further notice. Thank you for appearing. All right, board members, final application for the evening, 74 dish 2023 Z. Mikhail Libin, I believe, Zone R 2011 Winchester Court. C variance for deck. Applicant proposes 24 by 9 by 16 by 9 by 4 composite deck, 18 feet approximately from the property line, where 23 is required. Sir, please come up, and I hope I pronounced, it was Libin?
You could say easily Mike and Leana Libin.
Libin, okay. Once again, the board attorney will swear both of you in.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Libin, sorry, Mr. Libin, I can raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear as to the truth of the testimony that you're about to provide? Thank you. And Ms. Libin, can you raise your right hand? Thank you. Do you solemnly swear as to the truth of the testimony about, for which you're about to provide? Thank you.
You're the last ones. You've heard the routine before, so.
Yeah, actually gave me a chance to observe, and actually, I learn a lot. It's an interesting process.
It is, it is, and you were obviously a quick learner, but in your own words, sir, please tell us what's going on at your house and what you want to do.
So the whole project started about roughly 11 months to 12 months ago. All of a sudden, we found out we, our family, it's become a little bigger. Not my wife. She's become a grandmother.
We understood that.
Two months ago, we have a granddaughter. So what's interesting, my mom, who's still alive, 92 years old, she says to me, "Are you planning to move anywhere?" I said, "No." She says, "Why don't you fix the house, build a pool, and kids and grandchildren come to you?" And that's exactly what we started doing. So probably, let's say, about nine months ago, we did completely, we fixed our house.
The outside of the house, sightings and.
Yeah, so.
Flooding and everything.
Right, so every single company we hired, I heard some horror story before, they were all large and very well-known companies. So siding was done, pool is on the way in, also by a very reputable company. The paver stones also will be done by a pretty large, pretty large reputable company. And the deck, which we are trying to build, will be reconfigured so you could go down directly towards the pool. And the deck will be done composite instead of wood, which is about 27 years old. We've been living in this house for 27 years. So we're not moving, and the family is getting larger. So the deck right now that we have, it's a deck, but it's more like a balcony. You can't really put a decent-sized table there. So manufacturing, we're basically creating the deck.
Excuse me, I don't mean to kind of mock, but I don't think we sworn them in.
I did.
Oh, you did?
We sworn in, yep.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I just missed that. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so basically, that's what our goal.
Okay. Anything you want to say now, ma'am? Not yet. Well, it's admirable that you want to take care of your family, and it's a great thing as you age and you're able to do that. So you want to do it on your own property. Mr. Holland, looks like an irregular-sized lot, huh? Or shaped, I should say.
Yeah, chairman, so yes, the applicant's here tonight seeking one C variance for a 24-foot 9-inch by 16-foot by 9-foot 4-inch in height composite deck, which is proposed 18 feet from the rear yard property line, where 23 feet minimum is required. Although this property is located in the R 20 zone, which for decks require just a 10-foot setback, this development was built under alternate design standards, so R 9 standards are used. And then anything in the R 9, the setback all depends on the height of the deck. So this is one of those where if we, if it wasn't built under an alternate design standard, the applicant wouldn't be here tonight. But because of the standards that are used for this particular development, they do require some setback relief due to the rear yard setback of the deck.
Did you work on other ones with Mr. Gill on these where the, is this an HOA in there?
I don't believe so.
No? Right behind me, it's old.
There's an easement, there's an easement and wood.
Right, where we had, the same situation wouldn't apply if it was, the zone was treated different than, the requirements were treated than.
Correct. This is one of those private court developments. Yep.
Okay. I don't know if most of you remember, we had someone overfilled the pavers on that, and it would have been fine, except it was in a different, the requirements are different for that area, and they wouldn't be. You wouldn't be here tonight if it was different, right?
No, this is not my lot, though, eh?
No, no, no. All you have, yours up here. I'm looking at it on a computer over here.
Yeah.
I'll go to my left for questions on this.
Because we're in a cul-de-sac, and it's like a piece of.
Anything on my left?
No.
Do you see the survey? Okay.
The deck is behind the house. If you're looking from the street.
Yeah.
You don't see it at all.
Yeah, it's behind the house. So because it's a cul-de-sac, and we're right smack in the middle, the neighbor on the right, you can't really see them from the back.
And there is a slope, because we have a walkout basement, so the deck is actually on the second floor. So that requires a really steep staircase to go down.
A little curvature to the backyard?
No, I don't know. Not really.
Okay. Anything else on my left?
The deck is on the second floor. That's the thing.
So the pool company also will, they're already, they're in the process of doing it. They got all permits. They're doing water, drainage. Water drainage in the back of the property. Unfortunately, as you probably know, most of the old bridges are clay, and it's always created a problem.
We've never had any flooding in our area.
So in 27 years, we've never had any flood at all.
The only issue you're in front of us for is the fact that you, because the deck itself, and because you wouldn't be here, but the way they judge the setback is different, so you're five foot short of what it should be, but it would be if it were.
I don't understand.
It sounds a little confusing, but I'll go on my right. Questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. Daniel, you said because of the height of the deck.
Correct, yes. So in this, the standards that we use for this property specifically, the setback depends on the height. So higher the deck goes, the more the setback increases.
How much height is it over, where it would have qualified?
I want to say three feet.
Cannot be any lower.
Is the height the same as the existing one?
Yes, it's about three feet, three and a half feet.
Thank you.
The configuration of the steps, instead of going that way.
Staircase is.
Staircase, it's going to go down directly towards the pool.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's, yeah, that's right.
Ms. Chevalier?
No.
Ms. Andrews?
Basically, you're just redoing the deck. It's going to be all the same?
Oh, my God, I got you.
You're just replacing the deck that you have now. It's going to be, everything is the same?
So the wood will be replaced with the composite material.
And then you're moving to how you're going down. It's going to be a different.
Configuration, configuration of the steps is going to go that way, but the deck will be slightly larger by, I would say, maybe three feet.
It's like a width, it's a width, not a height, correct.
Not the height. The height is the same.
Yes, the height is the same.
The height's the same.
Because it has to be at the level of the door.
The door, so the height's the same.
You cannot change it.
Right.
Okay.
There is a door here and a door on the bottom.
Ms. Testaverde, anything?
No.
Okay.
Chairman, if you don't mind, I did, the applicant actually came into my office today. I think I'd like for him to testify on record. There's a frame shed. If you look at the survey on the bottom left, it's located about 11 and 1/2 feet off of the property.
Is that yours?
Correct.
Yeah, Mr. Libin, if you just want to testify and what your plans are with that shed to the board?
Yes, so that shed originally, the question was arise, arise with that company and with the Hardscape Company. They both agreed to either relocate the shed, shed towards my property, but upon inspection of that shed, which is about 20 years old, he said, "You better off just completely remove that shed from the property," and that's exactly what we intend to do.
Okay, so you'll go on the record that that's going to be gone?
That's correct.
Okay. If you're going to replace it, make sure you're checking with the zoning officer as to where you can put.
So just from my notes here, it is located technically off the property. It's 15 feet, or 15 feet is that?
It's 11 and 1/2 feet.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that shed will be completely removed.
Okay.
One more thing. Chairman mentioned HOA, what was it?
You're not under an HOA.
You don't live in HOA, do you?
Same.
Oh, you do?
Two.
So don't we have to have approval?
homeowners association.
Yes.
Okay.
They receive, they receive the notice as well.
They have no objection?
Otherwise, they would have been here.
Okay. If you could get something from them in writing that you can file with the record, that they have no objection, because, did you get permission for the pool?
Yes, everything is filed, correct.
No, no.
Oh.
From the HOA?
No.
What development are you in?
Yardly Manor.
Okay. So is there an HOA in there?
Yes.
Still?
It cost me $200 a year. That's what I'm paying.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an HOA.
What is it?
Yep.
But you.
I hope you're paying less.
Do you, do they maintain the property?
No.
No.
Only there's no removals.
Because it's private real.
And a park, a little park.
Okay. All right. For the record, sir, if you would, when you, however you address them, would you please inform them, have them write a letter of no interest, meaning they don't care the fact that you're demolishing that shed and the fact that you're putting, changing your deck over, even though it was already there. We'd just like to have that for the record.
So even though the certified letter was sent to them?
You sent a certified letter to them?
They're part of the noticing.
And there was no response?
No response.
I'd have to ask legal, it's a legal decision. I can't.
There's a 22 letters were sent out. It's on the record.
I mean, the board is certainly within their power to obviously request a letter, certainly within their power. I can't speak as to which the HOA's regulations might be. I just, I don't know the HOA's.
They, you get a copy back that they received the letter?
I believe.
We have them in the office. I don't have them with me.
Yeah. Yes, an attempt was made, and certainly if the board wanted more on approval, they would be, you know, entitled to.
That's fine. I'm okay with it if the board is, as long as the attempt was made.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
All right.
Yeah, just to clarify, that letter was for this application for the deck. Okay. Just as a matter of practice, I would notify them regarding the pool, or at least verify your regulations, just to make sure you don't get any heat with them.
No, no, I mean, I followed the instructions from the office, and.
Okay.
They walked me through the whole project.
All right. I have to go to a public portion on this matter. Fortunately for you, you're the last application, so you can turn around.
There is no public portion.
Very observant, very good. This is a matter at 11 Winchester Court, it's 74 dish 2023 Z. This is for a deck that's going to require a C variance for setback. Anyone here have any concern that they wish to express to the board? Come forward. No one has entered the room. No one's in the room. I'll close the public portion. Any final comments, sir?
No, I bet I spoke enough.
Okay. I assume you're going to ask me to take a vote?
Yes, please.
Yes. She's right. Okay. Board members, this is, again, this is a five-foot difference here. It's 23 foot, it's 18, we're 23 required, but because of the height, it's judged differently. So I think we've all been down this road with a few others, a few other applications in the same vein. Someone interested in moving this for approval for the C variance for the setback?
Testaverde.
Chevalier and Testaverde. Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes, thank you for doing it the correct way.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, you get the resolution by the next meeting. Make sure you have that before you do anything. Please check with the building department on all matters, just so you don't run afoul. You've heard other issues tonight. I'm not here to preach. I'm merely here just to advise.
No, I learned my lesson a while ago back. I don't do anything without a permit.
I wish you the best luck, and I wish you the best luck having your family move in with you.
So just to make clear, so I can't do anything, see, at least among.
Correct.
Have you filed building permits for the deck yet?
Yes.
You have? Okay. When you get a copy of the resolution from Maureen's office, bring one copy of that resolution back to the building department as an update to your permit, so that that gives me now authorization to approve it as a zoning officer, okay?
Is it going to happen next month, or how is it going to work?
The resolution's going to be by the next meeting.
Yeah.
Right, which is next month.
Yes.
Yes.
So we cannot do anything.
Right, February 15th, I should have the resolution. Mr. Scogno will sign, probably by the 16th. I'll email it to you. Okay?
It might even be before. Sometimes they do come in early.
You don't want to use a pool with WAA.
Yeah, it's a little cold. All right, thank you both for being here tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
My board members, that was the last application. The other one was moved. General public comments? There's no one else in the room, so I think we can forego that. Anything from council?
Nothing on my end. Thank you for them.
And from the township?
Nope, thank you, chairman.
Well, thank you for being here. We welcome you. Look forward to doing business with you, as it were.
Thank you.
It gets tougher from here. Don't worry. Any comments on my left? Welcome, sir, Mr. Singh. I know you have to attend a class, and Maureen, is that going to be scheduled for this month or next month?
I have a list to send him.
Yeah, there's 27th of this month, 29th. I don't know if you can get him in on that early. February 29th and March 30th are the next three coming up. early. February 29th and March 30th are the next three coming up. So, we'll get that accomplished. I think Mr. Victoria has to go in, so making both the better... Ficker the better. And anything on my left, board members? We're still live.
We're still live.
Okay. Anything on my right?
No.
Okay. A call for adjournment.
Testaverde.
Testaverde, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned. We'll see you next month, everybody.